We'll start. I'd like to call the meeting of September 10th to order. If you could all please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地, and justice for all. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
There's going to be one change to the agenda under Fall Coaches. With the announcement that volleyball has been moved to later in the year. Jen Brooks, we don't need to appoint for volleyball.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move. Second.
And, hold on a second. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 13th regular meeting and September 2nd special meeting?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion on either sets of minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to vote on the agenda?
Yeah.
We moved but didn't vote.
Well, sorry. Let's go back to 2.2. Can, all those in favor? Of the agenda as amended? Thank you, Corey. 3. Debbie, I haven't looking at it on board docs. The consent agenda is 3.1 through 4.1?
Yes, yes.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Can somebody just explain what the impact of the new retention and disposition schedule is on us?
You didn't read all 300 pages?
I started to, and then I said, I think I'm going to ask somebody who actually understands what this means.
On behalf of Debbie and I, as the co-records retention officers of the district, it really has no impact. This is the guiding document that we use, that we follow, that all municipalities, school districts follow, as it pertains to retaining records, so.
Was there a significant change? It said it was aligning different things.
No, I mean, I didn't read the whole thing, but, you know, records that we do retain, we've yet to really come across anything that's changed, so.
Okay, okay. So the things that are relevant to us, you have, for the public record, the things that are relevant to us, you have looked at, and there's a change in them.
Of all those pages, there's only a certain section that's for schools. And it seemed, when I read through it, it's basically, these documents keep for X number of years. These documents keep for X careers, and so, I just didn't know if that was a change from the normal.
That's exactly, yeah.
It seems easy enough to figure out, so.
Thank you. Very helpful. Any other discussion on the two items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to our first community participation. If you would like to join in with participation, please do so on our YouTube feed in our chat window. We will give you a couple of minutes to type in your questions now or comments. We have one comment. It says, "Great first day." Hats off to everybody for that. Teachers, all staff, and administrators, thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
I was just looking for my reaction and emotion. I realized we don't have it in me. My little hand clap.
We do have a question here. I am wondering about how the highs versus lows risk sports were determined. Soccer seems like it would be a higher-risk sport.
So that was determined by the State Athletic Association and their executive committee.
And we don't have an understanding of how, other than that that's just how they did it?
Yeah, I don't have the rationale on how they determine high risk to low risk. Typically, it's contact. But I don't, there's some discrepancy between soccer and football and volleyball and soccer. So it was just a determination by the State Athletic Association. We're seeking clarification ourselves.
Thank you for that question. Anybody else? Please feel free to type in. Okay, we're going to hold on to participation for now. We'll get back to that later. If we could, please move to 6.1. We've got some appointments. I'm going to do them individually. A motion to approve the appointment of Randy Freeman as a probationary director of Facilities 1, effective September 21st, as recommended by the business manager and superintendent.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Matt, can you explain what this position is filling?
Sure. So the specific position that it's filling is actually one that was vacated two years ago when Craig Schick retired as the superintendent of Buildings and Grounds after 31 years at HCS. The superintendent of Buildings and Grounds position through civil service was phased out in the new classification as director of facilities. So initially, we went through, that position is a statewide canvas. So we had to canvass, we have to put on the canvas throughout the whole state. In our first round, we got a lot of responses, very few locally. So most of the candidates were, you know, shied away because of the location and geographic restrictions. Then tried to get creative and fill the position with a couple of other classifications through civil service, but ultimately, it was determined that what we were looking for was the director of facilities position. So we did a second canvas over the summer, had a few more candidates, a few more new candidates, and really impressed with Randy and happy to have him onboard. So ultimately, it's Craig's position when he retired two years ago.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. I need a motion to approve Caitlin Collins to the substitute list, as recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent.
Move. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of the following mentors for the 20... What, do we need to adjust the school year on here? Do I need to amend it, Debbie? Or can I, or not? It says 1920. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Mine says 2020, 21, so on board access, it says something else?
19 to 20 school year.
Okay, just it's 2021.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve, to appoint the following mentors for the 2020, 2021 school year, as recommended by the principal and superintendent? And they are listed. There's three.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the following advisor volunteers for the 2020, 2021 Fall Play, Vintage Hitchcock 3 radio plays contingent upon COVID-19 status, as recommended by the superintendent and secondary principal.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Bill, will there be any, or maybe there have been already, protocols for safety for play?
Yes, and it's going to be virtual. Their auditions will be conducted in person, and then the play is going to be put together virtually. So it's going to be a combination of in-person and virtual.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, she has protocols put in place for safety.
Wonderful. I think, I think the auditions are already done, and I think they were done virtually, actually.
I think so, too.
Yep, it's already cast. It's essentially going to be a film, is what it's going to be. So that way, they'll be able to have small numbers of people in small places for short periods of time and do it that way.
Great.
So I'm going to, I'm going to acknowledge the two relationships that I have in that, which I do not think are conflict of interest. But given that Morgan is the technical director and my father is one of the volunteers, I just want to acknowledge that before voting.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I need a motion to appoint the following Fall Coaches contingent upon COVID-19 status, significant numbers of participants for competition, and upon meeting the coaching certification requirements, as mandated by New York State law, as recommended by the athletic director and superintendent. And everybody except for varsity volleyball, which was removed in the beginning of the meeting. So Travis, move. I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I don't know if this is appropriate, please. Oops, sorry, Corey.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, has there been, I know that there was supposed to be a vote for Section 3 superintendents today. Has that taken place, Bill, and what was the result of that?
So today at 4 o'clock was the deadline, submit district decisions based on three options. That our submission was submitted prior to 4 o'clock. The executive committee of Section 3 is meeting tomorrow morning to make a determination based on retention ballot.
Okay.
So my question is, as a board, well, we have a chance to, later on the agenda, we have this item of the return to sports plan. Is that something that is for us to vote on, if that's going to happen? Or is that something that the district has already determined?
That's a district determination.
I would feel more comfortable voting on these Fall Coaches after we had a full discussion on the, on the return to sports plan.
Okay, so should we table it and move it to after that?
I would move to table it until after that discussion.
To 6.6? We'll move it to 6.6?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to table and move to 6.6. Do I have a second for that table?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of tabling for now?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I got to remember, not for Debbie. So that is the end of Personnel section. I need a motion to approve the recommendations of the CSE and CPSE, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion? Would have to be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
6.3 is a discussion. It's a first reading, and it's regarding leave of absence for COVID-19 qualifying reasons.
It was a fun read.
Anything that we need to talk about in depth?
I have one thing. It's just a small item. The very last section, the very last paragraph, we were trying to focus in on either using FML+ or Expanded FMLA. And the very last paragraph, FMLA+ is used, where we'd been using, I believe, expanded FMLA in it.
So relatively late yesterday, I submitted what was a drastic renovation of this. I don't know what other people's opinion of it were, so I don't know.
It was helpful.
Where we stand. I, so, I mean, again, this is the first read. It actually says that it's sort of back being, you know, reviewed and updated on, I mean. So I don't know how many people had a chance to see that. I don't know what your thoughts were, Bill, on sort of my rework of it. Is my understanding of that correct? I mean, so, so there's this, you know, alphabet soup, FF-CRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and they list through these six things, but then they say 1 through 4 and 6 do this, and then 5 does that. I mean, to me, 1 through 4 and 6 were the extended, or the employee-paid sick leave, and 5 was the extended FMLA, or, you know, the FMLA+. Was I reading that correctly? Is that how you understood it?
Yes, you were reading it correctly. And this is a pretty technical policy that I think, after this first read, we make the edits. We should resubmit to Labor Relations and then come back together as a policy committee before our second read. Because it's very technical. There's law.
Yeah, there's a lot in here.
Yeah. Should we go, should we go through and talk about the options that we have? And what we think we should do for the next draft?
Yeah, I was going to ask that, too. There's one section that says choose from one of the following, and then there's an optional section that's in there.
There's three areas where we have an option. Either you're given two options, or there's an option you can use or neglect. The first one is in Section 3. You can choose an option C or D. Ellen, correct, tell me what you think, but I know that the other two of us in the committee were thinking C.
This is where, I mean, this is unbelievably complicated. For up to 10 weeks of expanded pay will not exceed if using emergency paid sick leave for the first two weeks.
I'll find my notes and put it while I was thinking.
So the difference there, to me, and tell me if I'm reading this right. The difference would be in D, employees would be asked to use the accrued, any accrual of sick leave that they already have.
That's the way.
For two weeks.
Yeah.
And C is that they would go straight into this expanded sick leave.
C would be more beneficial for employees. My take.
And I'm trying, go ahead, you go.
My view on this is that I do think it makes sense in most cases that if employees are sick, we've given them sick days, they should use those. But this is a year where I don't want anybody thinking, well, I don't want to use my sick days that I've saved up. I want people to feel like if they are sick, they should stay home, and that they have the incentive to stay home. So for me, if we're thinking about the safety of the school, the safety of our employees, the safety of students, I would also like Travis to opt for, let's incentivize people to stay home when they're sick.
But, but they still have the option of using sick time, because there was something I read later. I couldn't figure out why there would be a benefit, but there was something I read later about somebody who, you get your 12 weeks of FMLA. And so if you use two weeks of paid sick time at the front of this, you haven't actually tapped into your FMLA. So if you are expecting that you may need that time later for some reason, that that's actually the benefit of using your accrued time first, because you then still have that time. Am I understanding that right? Because I, again, I couldn't figure out, I guess I was trying to figure out why people would choose to use their accrued time rather than going right into leave. And I think, and I think I, later, as I was reading through the policy, there was a section that made it clear that, you know, if you have used leave earlier in the year, you know, if you left for a funeral or had a parent that was hospitalized and took two weeks off using FMLA for that, now you only have 10 weeks of FMLA left. If you need it now, you may have to use that accrued time, and that, it's all, yeah, I'm making it worse. I'll just stop. But yeah, no, so as long as people still have the option to use their accrued time before they go into the leave time, that's, that's fine. To Corey's point, yeah, I don't want people to not use sick time.
Bill, what is, Bill, what is your take on the interpretation of C versus D? Or what have you heard from both C's or whomever?
Lot of differing opinions. That's why.
Go figure.
Do you have a sense of why they are requiring it? Is it just a matter of principal finances, budget, whatever, or?
I don't have a sense.
Previous procedure?
And we've, we've talked as a superintendent group, and there's a lot of different opinions and guidance right now from attorneys and labor relations. So I think that's why they're putting options in for your own district to determine which you think is best for your employee group.
And, and the actual federal document does not require either, correct?
That is correct.
So clarify that for me. So we're talking about option C or D, and we don't have to choose either. We're allowed to do that if so. Is that the way I heard that?
So either one of those is acceptable under the federal document?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought. Can we agree for the time being to move on with C? And if anyone can come up with a convincing reason not to use C and choose D instead?
Can I, can I just jump in with one thing? And I think the bigger, the biggest difference between the two, I'm going to, if I'm hearing you correctly, is going to, is going to ultimately come back to the wage that they're paid. So while in C, they're not going to have to use their accrued leave time. They're only going to be compensated 2/3 of their regular rate of pay. In option D, which our current district policy requires people, not non-COVID-related, just FMLA, standard FMLA leave, our current policy requires employees to use their accrued leave time, you know, for that FMLA leave. So, you know, ultimately, I, you know, I can't speak for employees, but that, that would ultimately be the big difference. As I see it, is one option is going to allow them to retain their leave time. However, they're only going to be paid 2/3 of their, their normal wage versus being paid their normal wage but having to use their accrued leave time.
Yeah.
I don't know, clarify if it muddied it even further.
It helped. I think we can't dismiss Corey's, you know, concern either, because it's very valid in this case.
I think through this conversation, I think.
We do have a sick bank here at HCS that, I don't have actual numbers, but, you know, we do have a sick bank here that, I don't know if there's anybody that's not in it. If it is, it's very minimal.
So I think it would be, I mean, I feel like this conversation, we don't have to end it. But if the policy committee understands where the board is feeling, because this is a first read, that you guys go back and look through things and go with the idea of what Corey said, making sure that it's the best for our employees, and coming back to us with what you feel is best from there for all of the options. And from there, we can discuss if we think something's missing. That's just my thought.
And I would add to that, Bill, if you have a chance to gauge, I don't know what the best mechanism is, through Labor Relations or through employees, what is going to incentivize them to, to use this more? It looks like C gives them the option still, Matt. They could use sick days or go to this 2/3 of their regular pay. And D locks them into one, so.
There's a footnote in the federal document that says, "An employee may elect to substitute any accrued vacation leave, personal time, or medical or sick leave for the first two weeks of partial paid leave under this section." So again, I think if we were going to go with C, I would put some sort of statement like that in to make it clear that they have, I think, I think the real district question, and I would look to leadership from this, is if policy is to require it typically, what, what are the implications of not requiring it now for this in the big picture? And are there no implications because this is a unique situation, and it's a unique policy, and it expires in December unless it's extended? You know, I mean, is it, but I just think from, from the district leadership standpoint, understanding whether it's slippery slope or otherwise, the impact of changing, if our current policy is that it's required, what is the impact of changing that in this policy?
I don't view it as something that's, I view it as something that's so specific and related specifically to COVID-related leave. You know, if you have somebody that needs a traditional FMLA leave, we're going to resort back to our existing work practices, not this. So I don't, I don't think it really creates a slippery slope. I think this is something that we want to, get on the same page with and be prepared to move forward with. And ultimately, in the grand scheme of things, I don't think it's going to influence the existing policy or change how we deal with things otherwise, so.
Okay, and with that said, then I would go for C with sort of that clarifying statement about that they have the option to use their accrued time.
I'm in the same boat with you, Ellen.
I also agree.
Are you guys good with taking it back as the policy committee?
Oh, yeah.
Using this conversation? I know, but using this conversation to help you get through the other options in the same frame, and then bringing back to us what you feel is best for the second read?
If you want to do that, that's fine. Now, my question is, because this policy, as it is right now, would end in December, should we try to, through special meetings, rush this one through, so to say, or?
Well, as a policy committee, we can get together as soon as possible and review this. And then we can do some work internally with Labor Relations and get some clarifying questions answered, and then move forward and bring that to you as a board.
Yeah, I think the only other comment I had about one of the optional things, and I had to read it two or three times, was about the intermittent use of it. And I have to say that I have to agree that if an employee is caring for someone who is in quarantine or isolation, it should be continuous leave. We shouldn't have, you know, an employee kind of coming in and out of work if they are caring for someone who is in isolation. That's not a great idea, but.
Sorry. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
And so the way it is written says that. It has to be continuous leave if someone is caring for someone who is in quarantine or isolation, with the option of, if the only problem is that a child's daycare closed, that, that people can, can opt in and out. Because again, I think about two working parent families. Often, those parents are dividing and conquering the need to stay home with a child for an extended period of time. But I think from, from the standpoint of this, if there's a child who is actually at home isolating or quarantining, I don't think we want an employee dividing and conquering. I think we either want them home or not, like, you know. And so I just wanted to make that statement. And the way it's written says that, but I had to read it two or three times to make sure that, that I was in that place. So that's the option under Section 5, so.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think that it makes sense for that, that case where you're taking care of a child whose caretaker is, is. case where you're taking care of a child whose caretaker is, is closed.
Right, right. So I just wanted to make that comment. That's it.
Good discussion and good luck with the policy committee getting through this one.
Travis and Ellen will reach out with some potential dates that we can meet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next discussion item. It's a discussion item regarding the naming of Columbus Day and potentially changing it to Endangerless People's Day. This is discussion after vote.
Mark, will you bring the context of where we are with this discussion and how it was presented to you?
Yes. Hello, everybody. So last year, a few sixth graders came to me with this proposal, and they, they're really passionate about it, and they, they've done a lot of research. And so we planned to try and present for the board last year. So the students wrote up what they would like to say. We talked about different things, and we were all ready to go, but then COVID hit, and it didn't happen. So this year, they reached out to me right away, wanting to, you know, have a conversation again around the changing of Columbus Days and just People's Day. And with the virtual and the beginning of the year, we weren't current, ready for, for having them present with us today, but they did write up another proposal that I shared with Mr. Dowson. And so that's where we are right now with this process.
Thanks, Mark.
So just as a point of clarification, we have a meeting again on the 8th, and this holiday is the 12th. So we meet before this holiday. I just had to look that up to see. Other discussion?
Just as somebody who's studied this time period and, and actually the writings of Columbus, I find the students' research is, is accurate and well, well done. And I commend them for the, the hard work they put in. And I think they make some very valid and important points that I think we should, we should heed.
I'd like to also add that they'd be more than happy to talk to anybody about this. They're very, they're, like I said, they're very passionate about it, along with other things as well. So they have a little group started, and a lot of things are, are on their plate, and they're looking to address, and this would be one of them. And they were, they were great to work with, great to talk with. And as you read what they have written, they, they are doing the work. They're doing a lot of work.
As a board, if you'd like them to present at our next meeting, we can certainly arrange that if you feel it's necessary.
I actually would like to give them the opportunity to. I, I think they've earned it. I think they've earned the right to, to do that and to present that. And to me, I feel like that, that I would like that. And not, not because I need them to convince me any differently, but because I think they've, they have a voice that they wanna share, and they've gone through the right channels to get it to where it should be. And I think it would be nice to do.
Mark, will you reach out to them?
I agree. I think it'd be great to hear from them and hear all, hear all their hard work instead of just seeing it in writing. And I think it would be a good presentation for them to be able to give. And then inviting them, obviously, if, if they all can't join, that's fine, but they could put together a presentation together as a group, and then have many that want to join us to do that next time. Then, just as a point of clarity, I guess for me, what happens after that? So they present, let's say they present, then do we vote on this? Do we, do we have the right to change that for our calendar? I mean, obviously, we're not changing it for the nation, but do we have to take that to a vote? Is that not a voteable thing? How does that work? Debbie, do you, do you know those steps?
I do not, but I will find out tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be interesting to know what we would have to do as a group after that, so that we can have an idea of how to proceed and how to properly place it on the agenda outside of a presentation. I think that would be great. Any other discussion?
Just Mark, if they, if these students are going to present, if they have other things they'd like to discuss, I think that there's a lot more that we, we could do. As a board, we could recognize the, the land that we're on, the people who inhabited this land. Originally, there's a lot of things that we, as a board, could do. And so I, for one, would be happy to hear any, any thoughts that they had as, as a group, either in this next presentation or, or anytime that they feel like they'd like to present to us.
Yes, I, I do believe that this, this one thing is just a stepping stone of different things that they, they really want to get into.
Great.
That's wonderful.
Is this a group that's creating opportunities for others to also become involved with them?
One thing we're trying to do is get them to be a school-recognized group and working with them on, on that process. You know, obviously, in, in the end, it'll be their choice if they, if they choose to make it a, a school-sanctioned club or activity. But, but we're talking with them about that as well.
Anything else at this time? Thank you for the discussion, and we'll look forward to hearing from Mark on where we're headed next. And Debbie. We are now on discussion item, return to play protocols. So if everybody could, if you need to open those files, great. But if we could maybe start out with Lauren giving us a little rundown on things, that would be great.
Thank you. So I have my PowerPoint here, and I can present it. And there's already been some changes to it, just based on some things that came out from the state. And honestly, since I've created it, it's changed quite a few times. But I'd like to go through it and, and highlight some points, and then we can just discuss further. So I'm just gonna present. Okay, so I created this PowerPoint based on recommend, the PowerPoint and just the in general roadmap to reopening, based on recommendations from Governor Cuomo, the state organization, Section 3, and then some guidance from our league, which is the Center State Conference. So as of right now, sports are set to start September 21st as per Governor Cuomo's guidance. The first potential contest date could be October 2nd. He, they, the state has upped the number of practices needed, so now it went from six to 10. So the, and he hasn't waived the seven-day practice rule, so the first possible day of contest would be October 2nd. The state took guidance from NSHS, which is the National Federation of High School Sports, I believe, on how they classified sports. Because the initial guidance that came out was from NSHS, and it seemed that our state guidance mimics that. So they label low to moderate sports as tennis, soccer, cross-country, field hockey, and swimming. And those ones can compete in inter-scholaristic contests within our region. The region has yet to be defined, per se, but we're, we're anticipating it's gonna be based on our league. So then, as of last night, late last night, the state moved to, moved high school, high-risk fall sports to fall season two, beginning March 1st, 2021. And that, for us, includes football and volleyball. And then there will be no state or regional championships. And we're waiting for the section to provide guidance on if there's gonna be any sectional play, which I don't believe there will be at any point, or if there's, at least gonna be an opportunity for league championships.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
On the sports that got moved, what will that impact on our numbers for the spring season? If those two sports move to the spring instead of being in the fall?
So they actually did, they created their own mini-season. So it's a fall sport season two. It's between winter and spring. So it actually pushes the spring sport date, start date to April 19th. So initially, it normally starts in the middle of March, and now it'll be April 19th instead. So there, it's its own separate season, and it would not impact numbers. If anything, I actually anticipate, because there's now an opportunity for athletes to play four sports, I anticipate some of those people who have to choose between, say, football and soccer, or soccer and volleyball, potentially participating in both seasons.
Thank you.
So I created some general guidance, guidelines based on the document that was sent from the state as well as NSHS. So students who are, who choose to be completely remote within our district are still eligible, eligible to participate in sports based on the bona fide student act that the state created. So it says that even as long as they're enrolled in three classes and they are enrolled in P as well, they're still eligible, remote or not. Any student, any athlete or coach participating in fall sports must be symptom-free, which on our, my big document, I list all the symptoms. And they should not participate if any member of the household exhibits symptoms. Athletes and coaches should not participate if they, they've been exposed to anyone who's tested positive within 14 days. Any athletes who test positive for COVID-19 within 14 days and attended practice or game must notify the coach, who then must notify the athletic director and the district. So we're gonna be contact tracing throughout this entire process. And I'm gonna get into that a little bit more when it comes to specifics on practices and games. So we're gonna limit games and practices to essential personnel. These essential personnel, in, in past, we've had volunteers, parents being able to watch practices. We're gonna limit that to limit the number of people exposed. Hand sanitizer will be readily available and plentiful. The equipment will be sanitized throughout practice, competition, as well as at the end of activity. And I go through that a little bit more in my practice and game slide. There will be no shared athletic towels, water bottles, clothing, or shoes. And individual clothing or towels must be washed and cleaned after each practice or game before they're allowed, they should return with those. So there, we're not gonna be using shared pennies. There's not gonna be practice pennies among the team that just kind of stay in a bag. Everything needs to go home and washed, and it's all the individual stuff. So one of the things that changes that I've spoken to Betsy, and she would like to be the one who screens all the athletes prior to practice, and she's gonna be the one who helps maintain all the forms that would be needed. So all the, the pre, all the COVID screening and taking the temperature. So all athletes are gonna report to the school nurse and be screened prior to going out to practice. That includes students who are coming for a remote day, from a remote day, or a student who's completely remote, they're gonna have to check in with Betsy prior to going. And also any student, even if they were checked earlier in the day, we're gonna recheck them again, just to make sure that everybody's symptom-free. We're gonna limit practices to paid coaches and athletes on the roster, so we're not gonna have any more student managers or any volunteer coaches, again, to limit the number of people that are practicing at any time. Coaches must wear masks for the duration of the practice. Players must also wear masks during, except during specified mask breaks determined by the coach in which they are socially distanced from other individuals. So this guideline came from the state document initially. In the NSHS document, it said that they don't, they don't have to wear masks if they're in vigorous activity, but the state document has said that they have to wear masks at all times unless it's unbearable. So based on that recommendation, I'm saying that they need to work, all sports need to wear masks at all times, unless it's a specified mask break. The coaches must sanitize equipment periodically throughout the practice. In the document, I label that as after each drill, and then also find at the end of each practice as well. So at the completion of a drill, or if they're changing equipment between cohorts, it needs to be sanitized in between.
Lauren, can I back you up just a second? So when the athletes go to Betsy to be screened, how, what is the process for letting the coach know that they've actually been to the school nurse?
So this, I happened to figure that out, I'm gonna be very honest. At like 2:45, Betsy said that she would do it. Initially, my, my plan said that the coaches would do it, but, because I was gonna have, put the ownership on the coaches, just to not put so much on the, the nurse, the nurses, because they already have a lot on their plate. But Betsy would rather do it herself. So I'm not sure the way to do it. I don't know if we give them a pass that says that they're clear to go. I don't know if she sends the coach a text message that says, "All of your players are cleared except for this one." But yeah, I'd have to look.
That's fine. I was just curious if there was a process yet or not. So, thank you.
So the state document also recommends staggered practices. So we'd have to, so this would help with kind of mask groups coming in at one time. So I created a very flexible staggered practice that I kind of just created, just so that everybody's not coming into the, coming into the parking lot or onto our facility at the same time. So this obviously was a little bit easier. I took out, in my initial slideshow, I had volleyball in there as well, but I took them out. So they, I've also, in the main document, added where they would be playing. So varsity boys and girls soccer would be sharing the stadium fields for practice, so they'd be switching on and off. The one would be on the stadium field, and the other one would be on the field that's closest to, to the building, where typically, like, in the past years, JV boys soccer has played. JV boys soccer will then be on the, what everybody calls the field hockey field. I, for me, is where the modified boys played last year, so they would be on that field. We're creating a new field behind the building closer to TNS, so that's gonna be where the modified girls and boys soccer play. And then boys and girls, varsity and modified cross-country will start at staggered times as well, but they're gonna be in the bus circle loop, and they typically run from there, or they can use that grass space. But all of this is subject to change. This is a very tentative staggered practice schedule, just something so that they're all not coming in at the same time and leaving at the same time. So for game guidelines, all the athletes, again, all our athletes must be screened prior to prac, prior to the game by the school nurse. The, if we're playing, if a visiting team is coming to us, it is the school's responsibility to screen them. They don't have to provide any of that to us, but in the case, in the event that there was a positive COVID test, we'd need to get that, their contact tracing sheet, and all their athletes. But they don't have to, we're not gonna be responsible for screening them. The site personnel's gonna document every person who attends the game to ensure proper contact tracing is necessary. And I'll get really more specific in the spectator side about this. The coaches must wear masks for the duration of the game. Players must also wear masks, except during specified mask breaks determined by the official in which they're socially distanced. For soccer, they have mask breaks and water breaks every, at the 20-minute mark throughout the game. So every 20 minutes, there's a stop in play, and the, all players are allowed to take their masks off and get a drink regardless of kind of where they're at. So that's up to the officials to determine. And then the officials must sanitize equipment periodically throughout the contest. In my mind, it would be for soccer, when the ball gets put out of play, we typically have five soccer balls rotating throughout, so that, that ball would need to be sanitized by, before it's able to be put back into play. We might have to limit the number of balls we're using to make sure that they're being sanitized, but in order to make sure it's being sanitized throughout the game, it needs to be sanitized when it goes out of bounds. Transportation. So we're gonna follow the NICID guidance with physical distancing restrictions, so we are only allowed a maximum of 22 students per bus. This prevents a lot of carpooling issues that we've had in the, in the past. We've had modified and varsity teams go to contests together, especially soccer. So we're gonna encourage parents or guardians to transport their athletes to and from each contest to limit the number of students on the bus. And also just to, to help with not having to send two buses, because we're already gonna have a difficult time with busing as is. Athletes, coaches, and bus drivers must wear masks for the duration of the trip. Distance and remote learners will be responsible for their own transportation to the school for practices and for games. The remote learners are able to take the bus to contests. They just have to get themselves to school. But I wanted this point to be known that our busing transportation is not going to drive around and pick up remote learners and bring them back to school on Wednesday, let's say, for practice. They need to be, have to provide their own transportation to get to and from practice on those days. And then I understand that game times are gonna have to be altered to accommodate lots of buses. It's likely that a lot of games will have to take place on the weekends and in the evening under lights when possible. We're lucky and fortunate that we have the lights that we do, but a lot of other schools do not. So we're gonna have to be very flexible with our schedule and creative with it to, and work with Borna on, on trying to get buses where they need to be. But it's gonna be difficult, especially on an October 2nd start day, where we are running out of sunlight as is. So spectators. So this state, in their state's document and regulation- So spectators, so this date, in their state document and regulations passed by Governor Cuomo, Cuomo, excuse me, they've both said that the spectators are limited to two individuals per athlete. So what we're going to do with that is that we're going to have, each athlete's going to be given two spectator passes, and they're, they can give those to anyone within their household. The passes cannot be given to friends, it can't be given to, it should be somebody within their household or a family member. So with that being said, there will be no student section. So they're unable to attend unless they're a relative of one of the participating athletes. But that would mean that the student spectator would use one of those two passes. It could be the two parents and then the sibling. All spectators must pass COVID screening prior to entry in the contest. So our site personnel will have to take temperatures and do COVID questionnaires upon entry. So we're going to have to funnel all of the spectators through one general entrance, following social distancing rules, just to make sure that we're getting them screened and also recording all of the spectators who attend the contest. It's a little bit easier for us to monitor our spectators. But I'm thinking of visiting spectators, it's going to be a little bit more difficult because we're not as familiar with who they are and their relationship to an athlete. Spectators will wear masks for the duration of the event. Spectators will be directed to designated spaces where they may watch the game. They're expected to maintain within that, they're expected to maintain within that space for the duration of the game, and there should be no commingling. So I will be putting, making like 10-foot boxes similar, similar to what was done at graduation. And the site personnel will direct them to one of those boxes that will be labeled. And they're going to stay within that box throughout the duration of the game, with the exception of using potentially the bathroom. But really, there's not going to be any concession stands or anything. So they're going to be staying within that box throughout the game. Spectators are expected to maintain six feet of, maintain six feet of social distancing at all times, especially in common areas. Upon completion of the contest, spectators are expected to follow site personnel guidelines for dismissal and wait for their athlete in their car. They, they may not wait for their athlete on the field or in common areas. So the spectator rules are pretty strict, but at least there's the option of having spectators. So we want to make sure that they're staying as far away from other spectators as possible. They have their own space and that there's no mingling or hanging out on the field after they're going right to their car and waiting for the athlete if they're the one picking that athlete up.
I have another quick question regarding spectators, sorry.
That's okay.
I should have waited till the end, but I just figured as we're on that category. So will, will parents get correspondence and what the spectator rules are for away games prior or in advance? And is there a plan for communicating that? So that we're not traveling to places just to find out, maybe we can't be there, there's different rules, things like that?
That has come up in conversation in our league meeting a lot. Though we want a continuity across the board, that all of us are following very, very similar spectator protocols. Because like you said, you don't want to take, you don't want to take your athlete all the way to Poland and be the one who's transporting them there, and then Poland doesn't allow spectators. So we're, we're, the league is, at this point, honestly, the league is waiting for this vote to come. And then we're going to, we meet again on Monday. And if we vote to proceed with sports, I'm sure that a lot of these things will be hashed out. But I know that that conversation's been had multiple times, that the league itself, the Center State Conference, wants to have continuity among itself. And that's really all, most of what our fall sports will be, will be just in-league play.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the positive COVID test. In the event that there are positive cases on sports team, the district will work with Madison County Department of Health to determine which students, coaches and spectators must quarantine. They will also decide when it's necessary to suspend the season or issue a mandatory two-week pause for a specific team. Any athletes who test positive will have to be cleared by a physician as well as their school nurse in order to return to sports. During the period in which they are not cleared, they are unable to attend practices, games or meetings. And sports and games can be suspended or canceled at any time due to an increase in cases within our district, but also among opposing districts and teams. So I put that in there because there's, there's no guidance per se on what the, the number of cases per team would need to be in order to suspend a certain team. But it could be that we're playing a team that has low numbers and a few kids are quarantining, and they don't have the numbers to play that game. So I think that the schedules are going to be very, they're going to have to be very flexible. And we're going to anticipate a lot of cancellations based on numbers and based on potentially kids having to quarantine or not passing COVID screening. So that's what I had for everything. If you had any questions, I can take them at this point.
Thank you for putting together that presentation.
Yeah, I think, I think you've got.
So you said there's, go ahead, Ellen, please.
No, I was, I think you've done a great job with the guidance you've been given. I'm struggling with soccer being a low-risk sport. I'm really, really struggling with soccer being a low-risk sport. The other thing I wanted to throw out there is about whether or not there's any discussion of athletes who have had COVID in the past needing any sort of extra clearance. Because that's guidance that has come out potentially since many of these kids have had their physicals, that it might not come up. And so it's just something that, you know, and again, I would hope that there would be some sort of broader guidance about that. But, but students, particularly, and again, I think the pediatric guidance is about students over the age of 12 who have had symptomatic COVID, may need different clearance from a health standpoint than those who have not. So I don't know if there's been any discussion of that.
Based on all the guidance I have seen, I have not. But I can talk with Betsy more thoroughly, and we can come up with an in-district guidance that would be, that would retain just to our athletes.
And I can reach out to some of the other docs and see what they're seeing and hearing and all that too.
Can you sit?
Sorry, Corey, there's, there's a couple comments online, and I will bring this up during the participation period. But I just wanted you to know that they will be coming your way, Lauren, when we get to that part.
You said that there's no specific guidance on, on the number of, or limits of COVID. But where is that, what is the entity that would choose that? Is that up to the league? Is that up to each school? Is that up to each district? Is that, or is that like a county thing? Do you know, do you have an idea of who's going to make that call and when?
All the guidance I'm seeing is very broad and very general. So I think that that, they're leaving it up to the district even to part, to participate. And everything's kind of being pushed back on the district. Mark, Bill and myself met today, and, and that also came up in our meeting, saying that we would have to really have parameters in place about what the closure would be and the number that would have to be before we can even start participation, so that we had that ahead of time.
How familiar are we with all the plans that every district in our league has in place for their own school? Are we very familiar with their plans?
A lot of, I'm going to be honest, a lot took, took the plan from, from me. I was one of the first to send the plan out. And at, based on our league conversation, a lot of them are shaping their plans around my plan. I haven't seen or heard anybody say.
I meant that, like, their back-to-school plans. Because I feel like whatever they're, if we're sharing athletes, then whatever their back-to-school plan is, is now our back-to-school plan. So if they're doing something that we don't feel is the safest, all of a sudden, that means we're basically doing that by association with them. You know, I guess this is more a question for buildup for you, Lauren. Do we, are we, are we in association? Are our plans pretty compatible with what other districts are doing as far as our back-to-school plans and the precautions that everybody's taking?
Very similar. There has been some inconsistencies with masking within the school as far as masks being worn at all times or masks not being worn at all times. They're so, I, from the plans that I've seen within our region, that is the big inconsistency, is the masking.
And that masking guidance came from the state, correct? That they have to be masked when they're playing?
Yes.
I mean, within our reopening plan, not specific to athletics.
But I mean, from the athletic standpoint, that guidance is coming from the state, so it would have to be.
Yes, but so the language, and this has come up in conversations within our league, the language in the state document is very iffy. Like I said, it says that masks must be worn at all times unless unbearable or intolerable. And, and my point in our AD meeting yesterday was, well, if we require all of our athletes to wear masks because that's our protocol, what's to say another district says that it's intolerable for all of their athletes? So again, that would be, have to come from the, our, our league would have to agree on some sort of measurement that seems it untolerable, so.
Can I jump in with a question? Corey, go ahead, you had a follow-up.
No, this is a new question, so you go ahead, I'll ask mine after.
And I have a few too, so sorry, I'll just ask the one. Shared sports, any guidance from state? I assume we're not doing that. What are the thoughts on shared sports?
Combined sports, you mean?
Combined, shared, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so the guidance is that we can still proceed with shared sports. In our fall season, we don't have any shared sports now that football has been moved to that fall sport season too. So all of our fall sports are in-house at this point. But the guidance from the state and from the section is that you're allowed to have combined teams.
Okay, can I ask one more question real quick? Have you talked about this? So there's limited coaching, obviously, there's not volunteers like normal. If a coach gets COVID or, per policy, cannot coach, who takes over?
I have not thought about that, but I would assume that I, I could be somebody who stepped in. I would assume the other coaches would help as well. Any of the other coaches could help with those practices or the games, and we could cover each other.
The, you mean like a modified coach would take over for a varsity coach?
I would say the JV coach would take over for the varsity, or the varsity boys could help with the varsity girls. I wouldn't send a modi.
This scenario has not come up in internal conversations yet?
It has not. Where, honestly, all the league has really been focusing on is what this, what this vote's going to be. And we've been waiting for the guidance. This state guidance only came on Friday, late Friday night. And since then, we've met, and since then, the guidance has continuously changed. So we're kind of just working on, yeah.
I have a different question, but first I'll ask, because you've mentioned like the vote. I'm not, I'm just not familiar exactly with what the process is, what, what vote you're talking about, or who's voting, who makes the call and what we're voting on, and if you could just explain that.
Yep, so the section, session three posed a vote to all of its districts, all of the athletic directors, superintendents and principals within the section. And the vote initially was a three-ballot vote, or three-option vote. The first choice was to resume sports on September 21st, including high-risk sports. The second choice was to proceed with just low-risk sports and to push the high-risk sports to another season. And then third would be to suspend all sports until January 1st, when at that point, the governor Cuomo's saying high-risk sports could resume on January 1st, as of right now, he's saying. So the vote was given to all athletic directors to meet with the superintendent and the building principal to determine that. And I think they're just going to use that guidance to provide some sort of idea. I don't know, he hasn't really said. The executive meeting, executive committee is meeting tomorrow and will give us a result of that vote by 4:00 PM tomorrow. But it's, it's unclear if the section's actually going to say you can play or you can't play. The consensus, consensus from the league is that they think the section's just going to say, these are the results of the vote, and it's up to your district. That's what they're, a lot of the ADs think is going to happen, but we don't know.
Was a vote already given from our school for that?
Yes.
And that was which option?
To resume all low-risk sports on September 21st.
My second question is with regard to spectators. Can we choose, or is this a league decision? Can we choose to not admit any, not, any non-local spectators? Can we stick with our two people per household and not admit any away visitors? I know that's not the nicest thing to do, and it's not the most welcoming. But frankly, there's various degrees of concern about this disease, especially in this, in this broader region. And I don't know that I feel comfortable saying welcoming people in to the community without knowing how, how they are. And not just welcoming them in, but providing a space for them to be and socialize in our community.
So that has been considered. My biggest concern is if we close out spectators, and I'm asking for our parents to help with transportation and taking, taking their athletes to the games, if other districts do the same thing, parents will be taking an athlete to the game and then sitting in the parking lot for two hours and not being able to watch the game. So a lot of, that was my initial feeling, was we could limit the spectators to just Hamilton parents, because then we could control it. We have a general idea of the families associated with, with each athlete. But the conversation again in the league came up, well, how do you send a, you know, you're asking your parents to transport the kid, but they're not allowed to watch the kid play. So that is the option that we have at any point, and that can be discussed as well.
And Corey, speaking from just another complete end of that, there are also like, a lot of parents that, you know, have seniors on the team that may only play one sport and it's a fall sport, that's already cut, that's already feels like they're being short-changed. And while I totally understand it, just from a very personal perspective, and, and speaking on behalf of, I'm sure, other, other parents as well, I already feel like my kid's being like short-changed this year. And I think if we were to be closed out of those away games, and like Lauren said, if we're being asked to transport him two hours and then have to just sit in the car and not be able to watch that, it'd probably be a little devastating. Maybe get like some live stream going on or something, but, which is also an option maybe, but.
And I, I think it's the, it's that you create the opportunity that's safe, so people have the ability to take advantage of an opportunity as opposed to creating a barrier, which then leads to people behaving in ways that are inappropriate. Because I think, I think if you told visitors that they couldn't attend and they drove their kid two hours to get here, they're going to watch. And so I, I think it's one of those events where you may be better off creating a safe way to do it than creating a barrier that's going to lead to people finding unsafe ways to do it.
Yeah, I, I think I just, I share Ellen's concern about soccer being considered a low-risk sport, especially because, I mean, I've seen our varsity boys play. They're high-risk when there's no disease involved. So it's, to me, that's, that's really hard. And nobody, you'd be hard pressed to find somebody who enjoys sports more than me. I'll go cheer on any sport if there's a, I've gone to modified girls softball games in our district and not even really known them. It'd be just because I saw it happening, and I had 15 minutes before the board meeting. And so I figured I'd rather be five minutes late for the board meeting than miss a, you know, an at-bat. But it just seems so, so hard to say, and this is, you know, it's our whole country. I think, you know, and one commentator I talk, you know, I listen to on a podcast, a sports person who says, "Sports are our dessert, and we haven't done the work we need to do to get to our dessert. We haven't done the hard things we've done." And I would, as devastated as I would be to know that any kid missed out on sports, it's not even close to how it might feel if that sport led to the school closing or to somebody in the school getting sick and having major complications, or somebody in our community falling ill and potentially dying. Or spreading that, you know, there's just so many factors there that it's hard for me to justify in my mind, as much as sports has already allowed me to justify all sorts of immoral behavior on the parts of, of universities and, and professional athletics. But, so, so this is just a really hard thing for me to, to come to and just think, let's, let's try it and see if it works.
Can I, can I jump in with a quick question? Bill or Lauren, has there been any internal talks about just doing intramural, intramural, intramural sports? I'm sorry, I bobbled that one.
We have not had that discussion.
And one of my big concerns when I look through this, and just tell me if I'm wrong or right, I'm worried about the mingling together of middle school athletes. uh, the mingling together of middle school athletes and JV varsity athletes. Since for our reopening plan, we're keeping them separate.
Lauren, has there been a determination has not been made, even if modified sports will be allowed at the section level? I think the discussion right now is just at the varsity and JV level.
Right. But I included the modified in there as a plan in case it, it goes. And, and that also is it up to the the district to decide if we include modified sports and up to the league as, as well, if they decide that we're going to continue with modified sports. The way that I set it up now is that the modified soccer team, the only co-mingling would be with, with cross country, which I can modify that schedule. But uh, the modified soccer team is on the complete opposite end of the building. Um, and they're not having access to locker room. At this point, they're expected to come in whatever they're, they're playing in for that day. So it's not like they're all going to be in the boys locker room or the outdoor locker room even. They're expected to be in practice gear, ready to go. Um, but to limit as much time in there as possible. So I did think about that.
Modified games would not be like the same time as a JV varsity? I'm thinking about transportation. Would that be an issue? Or the games not even on the same days typically?
They might be on the same day. Um, where our varsity, our varsity games and JV games are likely going to be, have to be pushed to be under the lights at six o'clock. Um, just do, most of our varsity at this point anywhere always at least home games or at six P M. Um, and also with the addition of that modified field, all of our modified games could be on that backfield, even if we have a JV game going. Um, on that first field right next to the building, the modified game could be on the opposite end of the building.
Okay. Now that brings me to another question. You mentioned the lights. Um, I'm not too familiar with what the school looks like at nighttime. Um, so if I understand it right, if there's a game at our school, spectators are to pick up after the game, not like in the parking lot? Is this the student athlete expected to find their ride in the parking lot?
I think most of our student athletes kind of do that now anyway. Uh, but yeah, they would be, I guess we can work out a transportation system in where they're able to pull around and pick up the athlete. Um, similar to what we're doing in the bus circle now, we could set that up. But I think most of-
My concern would be more for modified, but you've kind of said modified, you know, in the back burner right now. Uh, my question would be how well lit is the parking lot? I'm thinking safety and I know how parking lots at night can get crazy. And uh, that's the concern that I have as far as that goes.
Uh, it is not well lit. So that would be something that we would have to look at a little bit better. Uh, the stadium lights really just shine onto the stadium itself with a little bit that goes on to the parking lot, but not much. So that would be something that we'd have to look um, into further.
You do see my concern though, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
Has there been any talks about, you know, your, the documents talk about um, I forget what the verbiage is, but it says, you know, depending on the um, interest for sports. Has there been a determination for what that cutoff would be? Like if X amount of kids are interested in this sport, we'll do it or X amount we won't?
That's just, it would be the same as, as it always is, correct? Enough to field the team?
It would be, yeah, it'd be sport specific based on roster demands.
Okay.
So I, yeah, I think Travis makes a good point about every year it feels like there's a, a desire to pull kids up from, and I don't know if you can even pull eighth grade into JV. I don't think you can pull eighth grade into varsity, but I, I think that's a really good point that we have built this system that keeps those two groups co-horted separately and that just being aware of that as you're looking at teams and, and bringing them together. I think the other thing I just wanted to comment on is I think you're probably going to find it extremely difficult to find a number at which you are going to have to stop sports. I, I can tell you after spending months trying to do that, it's almost impossible. It's almost impossible to come up with a number that's going to be the thing that makes you stop. I think the department of health will, will provide you with guidance for when it's time. But it's also going to depend on, you know, if, if one positive case puts 30 people into quarantine, that's going to be a very different situation than if one positive case puts one person into quarantine. And, and there's so many moving parts that I, I think, I think you're going to have a really hard time coming up with a number cutoff for when it's time to close down. I think, I think you're better off sort of just thinking in terms of principles and and, and a- as much as people are going to want numbers, it's really hard to come up with a number.
But Ellen, correct me if I'm wrong, but this has to do with the fact that there's no systematic testing of these students anyway. So the numbers aren't as significant as if we had some kind of plan in place where we are testing students. We're kind of, the testing is sporadic enough that the numbers are also.
And you're gonna, your, your, your testing is going to be dependent upon symptomatic students, most likely. Which then may trigger others to get tested depending on the situation, but.
This is just a discussion item. That's correct, right?
Yes, but we do have um, our table item next to um, vote on coaches.
I understand. Again, I think, I thank you all, you know, it looks like we're ripping, but I thank you all for all the hard work you've put into this point. But um, we do have our concerns and thank you for um, taking them seriously.
Definitely. I agree with you Travis. Anything else on this topic? Again, there are some questions, comments through um, the YouTube link that I will bring up during our next participation point. So, so we'll come back to this conversation then from there. Um, we have um, I'll go back to it. We have a motion. We need a motion to approve the appointment of fall coaches contingent upon COVID-19 status, significant numbers of participation, participants for competition and upon meeting the coach's certification requirements as mandated, mandated by New York state law and recommended by the athletic director and superintendent.
Michelle, we just have to take from the table first.
No, sorry. You're right, Debbie. Can I have a motion to take fall coaches from the table? I know she's always right. I'll move.
I'll second.
Um, all those in favor to remove from the table?
Aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Uh, can I have a motion to approve the appointment of the following coaches? Um, contingent upon COVID-19 status, significant numbers of participants and for competition and meeting coaches certification requirements as mandated by New York state law is recommended by the athletic director and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion here?
Travis, I think you're on the other.
Are we on discussion for fall coaches?
Yes.
Where did the verbiage for, let me find it here, sorry. Where did the verbiage for um, like uh, pending COVID issues come from?
Yeah. Contingent upon COVID, that is, that status, what does that mean? Is that just individual coaches?
No, I think that's of section three.
Yeah.
Pending the section three approval, the COVID status of section three approval.
So in other words, if we approve coaches, but section three says you're not playing, then we don't need coaches anymore.
That is correct.
What if internally we say no fall sports? Just if that, if something happens down the road, how binding are these appointments?
We can, we can call that.
Say that again, Bill?
Once the season starts, then we would have to pay coaches for, it'd be prorated based on the length of the season and the start date.
So at the moment, at the moment, that would be September 21st. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct. Corey, were you going to say something?
That is, I had the same question.
Okay.
But I, I guess I can also say uh, I just, it doesn't seem to me like at this point, there's a plan in place that I feel comfortable saying that we should be appointing coaches for. And that's no fault to the plan that was made. I think that is because we've made a district plan, which I think has some issues I'd like to see worked out. Uh, but overall has some good measures. Uh, but a district plan to me means nothing if I don't know what the overall uh, league plan is going to be. And if I can't know what that league plan is, I don't feel comfortable in good conscience saying uh, that we should move ahead with sports and the district should be supporting that until we know what the whole league plan is. Because again, once we start sharing uh, sports with people, especially soccer, and frankly, it seems like very possibly even cross country, we're starting to just create more vectors for, for contamination and for, for infection that can't be modi- you know, we can't, we can't really follow all those after we've agreed to it. So uh, at this point, I, I feel very reticent to say that we should do anything to move ahead with sports until we know more from, from the league about exactly how that's going to be.
I share, I share Corey's thoughts. I'd like to, you know, we're talking September 21st. You know, let's hear what the vote from section three was before we have this conversation. And some of the questions we've arise, raised tonight can be talked about internally and we can take that information with us.
We do not have to appoint coaches tonight. We can, we can table it and wait for the section three decision and then revisit it um, if we decide to move forward with athletics.
So at this point, that would be a special meeting in order to hit the date.
I, I think, I think we need a special meeting. I, I think we need to plan on a special meeting before the 21st so that we can a- as a board make a decision when there's more information available to us. I, I think we also need to be very clear about what information we need to make that recommendation. Um, because it sounds to me like there are very specific concerns and um, in order to be fair to the whole process and all of the work that's been done and, and to giving this the best shot to work well and safely. I think if there are questions and concerns, then I, I think we need to provide those questions um, so that Lauren has a chance to provide answers before that special meeting. Um, and I don't know that we need to do that publicly at this meeting, but I, I think I think if people have very specific concerns, then, then they need to be very clear so that those answers can be brought.
I mean, I think the majority of those questions and concerns have already been brought forward. Uh, but obviously if there are more, then I agree with you that we need to get them to Lauren as soon as possible so that we can um, make sure she can provide us with the right information for our special meeting.
And I don't know how feasible or proper this is, but we have, you know, on the board, a, a physician who's I think a reliable source of information, but also in the community, we have a large number of parents who are, uh, who are um, import, who have expertise that we could use. And I'd be very happy to, to hear and I would love to know their thoughts on, on what the the league plan is and how safe it is for, for our kids and, and uh, also for the kids who are not playing, but still going to school, those kids who are playing.
And I feel like we just need a little bit more information before we approve these coaches. And it feels like we have that time at the moment.
Hey Gray, I, I hate to say that, um, but at the same time, you know, we're just getting back to school. We're just feeling this next step of as, as a lot of people frame it, the new normal and, and not knowing what the next couple of weeks will bring as far as opening with school. And we're just hoping that everything continues to go smoothly as today did seem to. Um, but I don't think it could hurt. Um, I know it'll make the students a little bummed because they want to know if they're playing and I get that. Uh, but at the same time, we need to do what's safest for them. And although they don't necessarily or likely won't agree with us, um, that we're waiting to make sure that we can ensure safety as best as we can.
And as long as we're willing to come back to the table before that date, I think.
Um, so we need another motion to table fall coaches.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Second.
And um, we will look for a date and have it posted um, in the next couple of days for our special meeting.
We should vote on that too, right?
Yes. Um, any other discussion on tabling? Are we all set? All those in favor for tabling fall coaches till our special meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Lauren, for that presentation and all the work you're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Um, we are now at administrator's reports. Um, so I get to go around my nifty little circle and Kevin's in my bottom right. So you're starting first, Kevin. Oh, we lost Kevin's face.
There we go. Hit the
You ran away from me.
The mic. Well, thank you, Michelle. Um, just uh, really busy the last couple of days, obviously. Just working through detail. Um, yeah, today was incredible seeing the kids and families and the smiles. Uh, it was just really nice to have after six months, everyone back in the building, but um, just really busy going, ironing out details of, of everything. You'd be surprised how many details there are. Um, one of the things I just wanted to highlight oh, was uh, that as part of our four staff development days, we did do um, some S E L training with our staff, uh, which included um, um, training of the DESA, which is a Deveraux assessment of student strengths. Um, so all teachers did complete that uh, training. This is the assessment that we'll be using um, K through 12 to assess all of our students on social emotional learning. Um, and when we collect that data, um, you know, we'll use it to make key decisions on um, what supports and strategies we, we have for students that are, they're needing those supports and strategies. So the training really focused on why we're using a, a social emotional learning assessment. Um, how we're going to assess the students, what it looks like. Um, and then what we do with the data once we have it. Um, so that's uh, that was a highlighted part of the P D that we had in those opening days and uh, more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up online is Heather.
We had a wonderful, amazing uh, first day of school. Um, parents, students, teachers, staff. We, you know, really all came together today and it was such a good feeling to have children back in our building again. So um, it's been a lot of hard work over the last couple of uh, months, um, putting together, reorganizing the rooms. Um, really revamping traditional back to school lessons, um, to include a lot of technology. Um, also to include a focus on social emotional learning. Um, as students had been away from the school building and the typical routines for a long time. So uh, teachers really focused on that aspect of it as well. Um, I think that we, you know, really from the very beginning of the day, starting with morning meeting, we incorporated um, the technology devices that students were able to pick up this week. Um, there were some bumps in the road um, to iron out, which we anticipated and uh, we are, you know, still working on some of those pieces with passwords and logging in. Um, but overall, we're able to really connect with our cohort B remote students and um, while we had the cohort A students in person with us. And tomorrow we just can't wait to see uh, cohort B with us in person. Um, we also were able to connect with our fully remote students um, through the morning meeting time and um, teachers who had the remote group were really excited to do remote teaching as well. So there is a lot of brand new moments for students and for teachers and um, just a, a lot of feelings of success that we, you know, are back in the building and that we accomplished what we did today. Um, so we're still learning now. We're looking at analyzing arrival and dismissal um, routines, which are brand new this year. So you know, really trying to troubleshoot some of those, um, with the best but then it's always important to go back and look at the glitches and, and try to figure out um, how to improve that. So um, parents and students, everybody that's so patient and amazing and supportive. Um, I can't say enough about that. So um, what's coming up in the event area, um, is that we're looking at doing a virtual assembly video that will go on Monday morning. Um, we really want to um, include the fully remote students in our classroom and our community. And so that's a way to do that. Um, we hope that uh, hybrid students and remote students together will be able uh hybrid students and remote students together will be able to um show some of the projects and work that they're working on. And that we can send that out as well as uh celebrations of birthdays and special events once a week on Mondays to everybody. Um so that's one thing that in particular, one of the elementary teachers has really spearheaded and came up with the idea. Um and we're moving forward with that. Another project, um today we had a virtual meeting with the COLD at Colgate and really took a look at how we can now offer some of our traditional programs that were in person in a virtual way. So Liberty Kids is um a program that is a support for the primary students in reading. Um and that's been going on for, you know, several many years now, actually. And so we brainstormed some ways that we could do that um virtually. So that will be in the work. Um I think one of the things that we are looking at is how to provide some of those other extracurricular and social opportunities for um students in the school as well as the academics. Um so where we are also gonna be, we've um one of the primary teachers has already given us a little bit of training on the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project videos. And we hope to have those in all of our elementary classrooms coming up. So we're just waiting um for that order to complete. But we can't wait to begin to use those as well. So um yeah, we had a thank you, just you know, so much thank you for community support um from everybody and and we can't wait to go back tomorrow.
Thank you, Heather. Chris?
Oh, it's me. Um I'd just like to echo a lot of what um my fellow administrators have said about the opening day today. It was really fun to watch, you know, the kids come back into the building and then watch what happened to the teachers when they were in front of kids. It's I haven't seen it in a while. And it was like a shot of adrenaline and you really started to see them in their element and them interacting with kids. It was something to behold. Um pretty proud of our network. I would say that our network had our biggest day other than uh March Madness. It held together very well. Um there was tons of video flying around that network and it um did ve- very well. Like Heather said, um I'm I'm very pleased with the way that the uh device distribution went. That seemed to be, you know, very minimally bumpy, um thanks to everybody that worked on that. Um and then the last thing that I wanted to just report and you've probably if any of you have called the school recently, you've probably heard our new auto attendant. Um and that's a signal that our new um voice over IP phone system is installed. And um you know, there are still a couple of bumps to work out with that system, but um I think so far, everybody's pretty happy with it. That's it.
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you. I too would like to thank everybody that was involved in our reopening. It's been a long time, a lot of planning. It was great to see everything together uh come together. I too felt the emotion like Jen did this morning, uh seeing people come in, seeing kids on a school bus, um seeing kids waving, pulling into the parking lot, excited to be coming into the building. It it really is. You know, in a typical year, I always say it's it's too big a building to not have kids in it. And by September 1st, we're ready to have them back. But this year it was especially rewarding. So other than that, um you know, I I do have some some bad news. Um it's it's not typical for me to mention anything budget related in September. Um usually November, December is when we begin budget discussions. Uh as you're aware, uh there continues to be some major concern at the state level and also at the federal level regarding funding. Um and there's been this, you know, um underlying possibility of a 20% aid cut that keeps being brought up. And unfortunately, our first couple of aid payments from New York State have in fact had 20% of those payments withheld. Um over the summer, uh we had some uh trickling uh food service payments that there was 20% withheld. Uh we had excess cost aid, which is tied to special education placements, not a significant revenue source for Hamilton that had 20% withheld. Um just this past week, though, the uh BOSI's aid payments, the Fall BOSI's aid payments, all districts. That's really the first big state aid payment for school districts in in a in a fiscal year. Those also had 20, 20% withheld. So um for us, it amounted to about $41,000. Little over $200,000 expected and we received about 165,000. So you know, there's a lot of concern. Um bigger districts that are more aid reliant have already started to make some changes and and plan for future cuts. There are other groups that still feel that this is just a a posturing and that eventually um you know, there will be federal monies that are passed down to the state and ultimately make school districts whole. There's concerns that whenever that happens, you know, there's question whether or not those those withheld payments will will be made whole to districts. So you know, at this point, we're kind of in a wait and see. You know, certainly next month, you know, as we start to get into our bigger foundation aid payments, if there's, if we continue to see um money withheld, you know, we may have to take action this year, which is unfortunate. But uh for the time being, we're just kind of sitting tight, not making any unnecessary expenditures and kind of plan it by ear as we go. Uh we'll continue to advocate and hope that things work out. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Matt. Mark?
Hi again, everybody. So after after hearing Matt, what I have to say, you know, makes me a little angry, but I'm uh I'm very proud of everybody today. So we had teachers that had to coordinate a satellite room, in-person people and fully remote students. They ran into some hiccups, but they worked through it. They troubleshoot and and they got the job done. I mean, they did a wonderful job today. And then our students, our students did great. They were, they came in, they were following all these new protocols that they have to follow. They were listening to their teachers. They were doing everything that they were supposed to do in order to be able to keep Hamilton open. You know, that's our ultimate goal is to is to have these procedures, keep people safe and keep Hamilton open. Um maintenance crew did a great job today. As I as I already said, teachers did a great job today. People went home very tired, right? Today was was a day and 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 still things are going in their mind. I'm sure that many teachers tonight aren't gonna sleep because they're thinking, oh, I'm gonna do this a little bit differently or I'm gonna do that a little bit differently. Um so although our our plan is is what I think is is best for safety and it's best for the delivery of instruction to our students and their education. It is tiring. It is tiring and and but everybody stepped up to the plate and everybody you know, did their part and took on the challenge the best that they could. So overall, I'm just so proud of everybody. Right, everybody in our community about how today went.
Thank you, Mark. Lauren already gave us an update and I wouldn't typically call on her, but Lauren already gave us her update. So thank you. Uh so that brings us to the 7.2, which is superintendent's report. Bill?
Thanks, Michelle. Uh I'll just, you've heard it from everybody, but I'm gonna say it again. Wow, what a day. Um it was great having everybody back to be out in the bus circle this morning and see the smile on kids' faces and the emotion from parents. That's what we're here for and and we delivered. And I'm just so proud of everybody. And I want to thank our community for trusting us, um for trusting in our reopening plan, um for entrusting us to to keep their kids safe and still deliver a a sound education and and we did it. Um so thank you for our our teachers, our administrative team, who has been working tirelessly um around the clock to get this ready to go. Um to our custodial staff, to our bus drivers, to our board, um everybody within our learning community. Hats off to all of you because it was a special day. Um Chris mentioned a shot of adrenaline. It it was amazing. Um there was definitely energy in the building and to have that back. Sorry, my lights are on a sensor. To have it back in the building, you know, it's been a long time since March and to have, you know, we're here for kids and that's what we're built for. That's what we do and that's what we're best at. And we got to do that again today. So it was exciting. It was tiring um and exhilarating and we get to do it all over again tomorrow. So we're excited for that. So with that said, some other news um from the state, uh the state education department um is doing a pilot uh COVID-19 snow day pilot. So days that we are in person, we now have the option to call a snow day um but not be charged for a snow day because we can then switch quickly to a remote instruction. So we will still have snow days uh when we have an in-person day, but we will quickly transition to remote learning that day. Um so everybody will stay home and will deliver instruction virtually. Um this is a one-year pilot. Uh the department will then review the outcome of the pilot and determine its flexibility going forward. I'd like to give you a capital project update. If I could, I'm gonna share my screen with you. If you just bear with me one second. Everybody have the screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um so this has changed since this was sent to me um on the 8th. Um our roofing um project is now 100% complete. Um everything is done. They moved out this morning. We had the inspection today and all is well. So we're very pleased with that. Um our boiler room and commissioning um is 95% complete. There's still work to do there. Um and they're working in in that room as we speak. Um our first floor entry lighting is 99% complete. There's some punch list items that need to be done. Um some major accomplishments this period. As I said, roofing is complete, exterior masonry is complete. Our hot water tanks are are complete and ready to go. Duct work is complete. Office area flooring is complete. New ceilings in the first and second four classrooms and corridors are complete. Our new roof drain on the elementary library is complete. Our passageway, storage area and teacher's lounge floor, teacher's lounge flooring is complete. Entry pad, electrical plan, relocations are complete. Um not completed, all bid scope items are either on track or ahead of schedule. An additional scope work for our exterior sign out in front um is 50% complete with no delay expected. Uh the landscaping is in. Uh the foundation has been poured and now needs to cure. We're looking at a tentative uh late September installation uh to complete our exterior um marquee and message center. Um like I said, they're just working on punch list items at this point. Continuing work out in front on the on the exterior message center. So um the project, it was a mad dash for completion. Uh there were some delays in some materials being delivered, um which caused us to go past um the August 28th uh substantial equivalency completion date. Uh but we are now there and punch list items are being done and we are in really good shape.
So Bill, you said there was um an update to that. Does that mean those yellows turn to green or?
Yes, yes, the yellow, the mason, the roofing turned to green. So that's 100% complete. The other two items stay yellow.
So they finished the flashing around the roof?
Yes.
Okay. Now, our project manager, is that correct uh language for him?
Yes.
How does the process work? Uh it's a he, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How does the process work for, I assume it would be him to go through and verify that everything is done to uh spec code and well, code would be a code enforcer, but um to make sure everything is complete and correct.
So that's a combination between our architects and construction manager. Um so they have already gone through the building. Uh they're working on punch list items. They are um looking at substantial um quality of work uh and making that part of their punch list. If they're not satisfied with something, that'll be part of the punch list and corrections that need to be made. So that is ongoing. They've been in the building um and that continues um daily.
And any of the punch list items obviously wouldn't be done, well, if they were within the school campus itself. If there are any things, anything that needs to be done yet inside of the school where the workers would have to come into the school, what are the uh protocols for those contractors to be in the school with our safety plan? Do you follow where I'm going?
Yes, so they they will be, for instance, today they were in the boiler room working. They're up on the roof. Um they are required to have masking, um follow all of our safety procedures. Um if there's punch list items that need to be done, they're looking at second shift or on Wednesdays when we have no students in the building. So they're following all of our safety procedures.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Matt, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to the capital project?
No, just just from the standpoint of oversight, our CM will be on site for for a few weeks still. Um and our architect will be making periodic visits and just like Bill said, any work that's left to do in instructional spaces, there's, you know, there's some patching and matching of paint, touch-up work. Anything that's done in the instructional spaces will be done on Wednesdays or on after hours. So it will not be done during the instructional day.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, believe me, the punch list stuff will go on for a while. I totally understand. Um you just, Matt, you mentioned CM. Is that construction manager? Is that what that stands for?
There is a substantial amount of work that was done this summer and, you know, if you had been in the building two weeks ago, you probably would have doubted that we would have opened today. Um it was amazing how it came together. There's a lot of people that worked weekends and nights um to try to get this building ready and and we opened today. So um we're happy with where we're at and where we're moving forward with the project.
Thank you. Any other updates for you, Bill?
That's it, Michelle. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question on the on snow days?
Yes.
Uh just, just it makes sense, maybe maybe not now because it'll bum everybody up, but if we could, you know, send out to parents at some point the policy on snow days, just so people are clear. Just because, you know, a lot of parents are probably already pinned to spend, planning to spend certain days at home every week and how it worked out with their with their work, where they can be flexible perhaps. And maybe they should know you need to build in some extra flexibility when the weather's bad, that they might not be thinking of right now because it doesn't, it can't snow again. That would be too terrible. We have too many bad things happening.
We're in central New York. It sure can. Yes, I can do that.
And then I don't know about, uh, this is a budget question, but could we get like uh like 50 bucks to get one of those dancing arm guys for Bill so he doesn't have to keep waving his hand to keep the lights on?
I can, I can run over there and every
We could make, maybe we can make Chris do it. That could be part of his duties now.
If anybody can make me dance, you do not want to see it again.
I could just go over there and do a cartwheel. You won't even see me.
Perfect. I'll just save 50 bucks.
There you go.
I think we should put this in the minutes. Um Bill, I know you're not done with your presentation yet. At least I don't think you did, but while it's on my mind, we delayed the start of school two days. Was that choice beneficial for you and your staff?
Absolutely. Um I really don't think we would have been able to open on the 8th. Um those two days afforded us to to get this building in order, to give the teachers more time to get into their rooms. Because with the delay of being able to get in their rooms, there's a lot of work to be done with rooms set up, going over policies and procedures, just giving teachers and staff the time to get into the building and be ready to greet students today. I think those two days were were crucial um to allowing us to open on time.
Were the construction workers still working on uh Wednes- Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yes, they were.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That brings us to 7.3, I do believe, which is knowledge sharing.
Can we go back real quick for just one general question for the administrators? And um you know, since I've been paying attention, the school has made a real shift towards project-based learning. How how compat- how compat- uh how compatible is that with hybrid and virtual learning? How has that panned out this year?
Um I can talk about that some. So I think, I think the project-based learning is is very compatible um with the hybrid model. And I've actually been having a lot of uh really interesting conversations with our teachers about it. I think in particular, the um asynchronous aspects of onliner learning um lend themselves particularly well to project-based learning. And it's um similar to that concept that you you've probably heard of of uh the flipped classroom or flipped learning. And that's where um teach, the students will acquire new content sort of on their own, either with shared videos or, you know, some, maybe something that they would read. And then the, the flipping happens where rather than the teacher being the, the conveyor of that knowledge, now the teacher meets in small groups with the kids and then they practice those skills and develop those skills and hone them. So I, I, I think that particularly the asynchronous aspects of, of online learning really lend themselves well to all the project-based work that we've done.
Chris, that was very helpful. Thank you.
Sure. And I know, Chris, I know that a lot of the benefit of project-based learning is leading to some kind of final project that in my estimation is always better if there's some stakes to it. And we've had students who, who at the end have presented to the board. I at least, speaking for myself, at least I'd be happy to be on a panel of, of, you know, other people who just listen to projects or, or have them present. So if that's something you're looking for, I'm sure that a lot of us on the board and I'm sure there are a lot of other community members who would be happy to get on a, get on a Google meet and listen to students present all those projects because they're always fun to hear about.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And the, one of the great things that, one of the other great things that comes out of this sort of fortuitously is that kids are making a lot of neat stuff. You know, videos or online portfolios or, or what have you. So yeah, that would be great.
Well, sent to move on to 7.3. Knowledge sharing. Has anybody have anything to share that they've done other than myself? I did a webinar. It was a deeper dive into board policy. It was okay. But it wasn't really something that I thought was fully worth like all of us doing. One question that did come up or one statement that the presenter made was that policy meetings are subject to open meetings law. She thought, but because she said it, it made me curious as to is it or not? So I think that's something that I'd like the policy committee to look into if they could.
I think we have a policy that mentions something to the-
And check to make sure with our attorney on that. So if you guys could look into that next time you meet, that would be great.
If I'm not mistaken, from, from the NISBA convention and one of the sessions I went to, they said anything that doesn't have a quorum of board members is, is fine.
Which is what I thought too, but because of the way she said it, I just wanted us to double check it to make sure that we are in compliance. So.
I can reach out.
Okay. Again, I think we're okay, but it just was one of those that caught me off guard. So remember, if you do attend any workshops or anything, to fill out the forms that we've set up so that it's easy for us to bring back our knowledge during these meetings. 7.4 is, I've got notes all the, all over here. Sorry, running today. The auditors will be presenting their report on the 8th at 5:30. We need to mark our calendars accordingly. Matt or Debbie, is that planning to be virtual or how is that meeting working? Are we planning on being virtual, Chris and Bill, for the eighth meeting?
I will, I, I can reach out to Swinar and I'm, I'm sure they will, they will accommodate us however we wish. If we're going to be virtual, we can have them present virtual as well. But, you know, if, if, if we do something different, they'll, they'll accommodate us. We'll just let them know.
Okay. So Chris and Bill will work on advising us on how our next meeting should be presented, either virtual or in person. So as a note, make sure everybody marks their calendar. I'll send a meeting invite to remind you that it's actually starts at 5:30 for that portion. That does bring us to participation. I have some comments that will bring us back to athletics. So I'm going to read them so that everybody gets caught up to where we are. The first one was Madison County is using a 12-foot social distance measure to determine the closest contact during exercise. Does this factor into discussions around sports? A little worried about disinfecting soccer balls. If, why are we worried about disinfecting soccer balls if the students are allowed to contact each other during the games and practices, even with masks or without? And the third one is our league spans very wide in a geographic area. What about doing competition that's more localized as opposed to the current leagues that we have set up? So Lauren, those are the three questions. I can read them back if you need me to, but those were the three that I've been holding on.
So to touch on the first one, I mentioned that the Madison County Board of Health recommends 12 feet of distance for, between exercise. The state has acknowledged that they're requiring PE classes to stay, stay 12 feet, feet apart for physical activity, but has somehow, that doesn't apply to sports. And they've acknowledged that, that 12 feet of distance is not the same in interscholastic sports, but has not, it doesn't say any reason why. But it does acknowledge that the recommendation and actually not the recommendation, the mandate for physical education is not the same as, as what we're saying for interscholastic sports. So there is some inequity there and that also is something that has been discussed among all the AGs. But nothing's been resolved. As far as the disinfecting of the soccer balls, the more we can try to keep safe, the better. Yeah, they are going to be kind of in close contact. And you can say, yeah, they're going for a header on the same ball or they're going for the same ball, but I'd still rather sanitize and take that one extra step than to not sanitize potentially. That's where the disease has spread. And then can you repeat the third question?
Yes. What about the league size? It spans very wide geographically? And have there been consideration about keeping it more localized?
There has been consideration. We have acknowledged that especially since Old Forge is in our league and in our division. So they're very far. And I have said, we've talked about how Madison County has a lower infection rate than Oneida County. So why would we be, and a lot of the schools we play are in Oneida County. So when, if this passes and we do start sports September 21st, the CFC has a league meeting on Monday, Monday afternoon to discuss everything. And I assume that the schedule will be up as well. And that has been talked about in all of our meetings about how we would schedule. Right now, we kind of just postpone the schedule to start on October 2nd, but it's likely that the games would be reorganized to reflect the geographic region.
Okay. Thank you for that. Based on the level of contact in soccer, everybody on the team would be considered in close contact and would have to quarantine based on one positive case. It was more of a statement, going back to the conversation that we were in at the time. And this person wanted to say that as much as they raised their concerns, they do thank you, Coach Reynolds, for your work on this plan and the time you've put into this. So thank you for answering those questions. For anybody else watching, time for you to put in your questions if you have any. And thank you for the people that are participating in our participation.
I'm sorry. How many people are watching live right now? Roughly?
It says nine.
Okay. So we'll give like another minute or so?
Yeah. So while we're waiting, when we move to executive session, there's nothing that we plan on building on after, correct?
That is correct.
So just so that everybody understands that we will not be coming back on live because it will not be available once we move to exec session. Maybe just a couple more seconds to see if anybody else has comments. I wish that they had those little, three little buttons, you know, like when you're texting. I wish I could see that in my chat so that I would know if somebody was really trying hard to get on here or not. Because that's not the case. I just blabber on and feel the silence.
So I'll throw, throw something in while we're filling the silence. There's a lot of inconsistencies in, in the state's guidance as far as exercise. They said that equipment in gyms could be six feet apart, but then it's a 12-foot contact trace roll. So there, there are a lot of, and I actually think from some of the discussions I heard, it was sort of that this group planned this piece and this group planned this piece and, and people missed those spots where, where there was that overlap. And so.
But I think it's, Lauren can correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it because most people go to the gyms and just sit on the equipment?
Right.
They just want to be seen.
Right. True. They don't actually exert themselves and breathe heavy. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they're not really there to work out.
Got it.
Right. Well, there has been no other public comment. So I thank everybody for participating in the meeting. And we will move to 9.0. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of particular individuals.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to the administrators. I believe you guys, Bill, they're all set to all leave, correct?
Yes, they are.
All right. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you for a great first day of school.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you, Lauren, for the impossible task.
And Chris-